Please stand for the question.
I declare it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, agree and does such as are all.
All right, tonight will be a vote. We're going to take a vote to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining strategy for Unit A and B because doing so in public session could negatively impact the bargaining position of this committee. The committee will not return to public session and will adjourn its meeting from executive session. Let's see, agenda adjustments. There's no adjustments tonight. The meeting is being video recorded. It's not being taped tonight, just recorded. Audio recorded. Audio recorded. I'm sorry. All right, we'll move on to the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the set of minutes from the June School Committee meeting?
Motion made by Whitman.
Motion made by Whitman, seconded by Rockland. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Next, I ask for a motion to approve the executive session minutes for the June 9th Secretary Treasurer's Evaluation Subcommittee meeting. Motion made by Situ, by Hannover. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to the Treasury reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package you have the Treasury report through June 30th, 2020. The front page has just a synopsis of where we are as we sit here tonight looking at fiscal 2020. Our income was up about $310,000, about 175 of that related to the increase in the regional transportation, but we also had some other increases in some miscellaneous income and other things that came across the board during the course of the year. The expenses, we had savings of $1.2 million. Again, based upon Tom and his team of when they're purchasing and keeping things tight during the season, especially with the school closing in March, there was some expenses which were not incurred, specifically a large chunk of like sports officials for the fall sports and so forth, that we realized some savings on that through the year. So overall, we have a surplus, a tentative surplus of the number that's on the form there. We have transfers from the last meeting. We moved money into stabilization. We moved money into the Regional Transportation Fund. And we're going to be reading a bunch of motions tonight for reducing that surplus as well during the course of the year, so during the course of the evening. So, which we can touch base in a little bit on that. Page two is our cash balances, which is, again, we're strong cash-wise. A little over $7 million right now in the bank. It's up over last year's, mainly because of, again, the difference in cash from last year to this year. It's right around the surplus that we've recognized so far this year. So it's sort of a, they go hand in hand. And our OPAP account has $761,000. Revenue, we have revenue for the month, we have $754,000. Again, our last invoicing of our towns went out first of May. And again, we understand that the towns are on skeleton crews as well. So there were some delays in getting some of the funds. But overall, we have received payments from Whitman and Hannover did send us a check. Again, Hannover, they stayed still, it was one of those checks. We've been in contact with the town offices over there. And it's just a matter of them getting extra copies of the paperwork. But there's no problems along that line. And we also did receive our final payment of the Chapter 70 funding for $370,000. So overall, we're good. Down below is the out-of-district tuition. We were owed some money by WAMTH. Again, every time they want to pay them, we have to go through all these contract signing paperwork and so forth. So that money did come in first of July, but they did owe us money at the end of the year as well. And the expenses, the total expenses for the month, a little over $2 million. Again, the largest chunk of that is 1.8 million roughly in payroll. Again, the staff, the teachers, they get paid over the summer for this year's contract. So we accrue about $1 million of salaries, which we then pay to the teachers over July and August. And everything else is in pretty much order from month to month and so forth. There's no surprises on the expenditures, so overall. And then the last column, the warrants payable, that's a total of about $163,000. Those are items that we purchased, that we haven't got invoiced for yet. And that's part of the end-of-the-year reconciliation as well. So, but that goes into the whole big picture of the surplus of the year. So overall, we're doing very well financially as the surplus will indicate on the front page.
Can I get a motion to approve the Treasury report? motion made by Situ, seconded by Rockland. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Budget transfers, the last page, we have three budget transfers for you to look at. The first one is a transfer from the payroll accounts that we, for the cafeteria workers, we maintain a separate fund for the cafeteria activities for school lunch. And with the school being closed from middle of March to the end of the year, we still incurred costs related to the cafeteria workers. But again, there was no revenue coming in from the students or from the state and the feds on the reimbursement. So we're asking to move $76,000 of salaries from the cafeteria fund into the general budget to cover those costs. The second one is just the life insurance. Again, when we budgeted last, you know, a year ago, January, for life insurance, the rates increased a little bit, so we're looking to increase that, the life insurance, by $600. And then we have some various professional fees and books and instructions for some end-of-the-year purchasing that we're looking to increase. And again, we have savings in the electricity account to handle that as well. So those are the transfers we're looking for.
I'll make the motion and all three.
Motion made by Hannover, seconded by Rockland. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
We've got quite plenty closing. It's been a hectic couple weeks. Again, Janine has acclimated herself very well to the system for purchasing. Patricia continues to do a great job with the payroll reconciling all the changes for everything. So they've been doing a great job. They've got their numbers tied up with all of the loose ends that we need to tie up between 30th. So everything's looking good and moving for, you know, again, for moving into the fiscal '21. The next card is the surplus revenue. In your package you have a schedule of proposed motions that I will read, and I can explain them as we go through.
Vote on each one as you have.
Vote each one as we go through. Motion one is an annual number. It's hereby moved to encumber $1,681,628.81 of the 2019-2020 non-resident tuition in order to reduce the 2020-2021 assessments to the district house.
Second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded by Hannover. Any discussion?
That is, this is, we do this every year. What happens, again, from an accounting standpoint, we collected $1.6 million from out-of-district towns for this current school year. We then hold them in like almost escrow account for this current year. And then we use that $1.6 million to apply towards our fiscal '21 budget, thereby reducing the assessments on all of our member towns. As you might remember during our budgetary discussions, because we had this $1.6 million moving into the fiscal '21 budget, we actually reduced our members' assessments, the eight towns, because we had this out-of-district tuition available to us. So it's just every year, this is what we do. We collect it and we move it into the next years.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion number two is hereby moved to credit $49,479.96 to the surplus revenue for warrants payable from the 2018-2019 budget.
Motion made by Hannover, seconded by Rockland.
Again, this is house cleaning at the end of the year. Again, when we do the warrants payable at the end of the year, there's some bills that are not performed. A couple years ago, we had, we awarded a bid for like the cafeteria sound system, and they just didn't perform, so we never used, we never paid that bill for that. So this is pretty much just a cleaning up of items we thought were in process last June that never came to fruition, so.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
Motion three is hereby moved to credit $8,871.64 to the 2019-2020 surplus revenue for salaries payable from the 2018-2019 budget.
Motion made by Situ, seconded by Rockland.
Again, this is a house cleaning. This is, again, we accrue at the end of the fiscal year about $1 million in payroll, included in there at times is some estimated numbers for the work that's being done over the close of school for summer work. And again, the numbers off by a little bit, but we usually accrue about $1 million and we had $8,000 left over, so it's pretty good, so.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
Motion four is hereby moved to encumber $992,000 from the 2019-2020 surplus revenue for building slash paving renovations per the recommendation of the Superintendent Director.
Seconded by Rockland, seconded by Whitman.
Mr. Chairman, this is an opportunity for us to, with the assistance of our engineering firm and our master facilities plan, basically begin this process of taking action, of putting a small addition on our school. These funds would allow us to design and build the exterior. And then, in the following school year, have our own vocational programs, build the interior. Our engineers estimate that we would save about $150 a square foot by doing that portion of the work ourselves. So it would be my intention in the next few months to bring this matter back to the committee with some recommendations as to where the best location would be and what the ripple effect benefit would be in some small way to add capacity to the building.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
Motion number five is hereby moved to encumber $77,963 from the 2019-2020 surplus revenue for cafeteria and field equipment per the recommendation of the Superintendent Director.
Motion made by Rockland, seconded by Situ.
Mr. Chairman, this will allow us to replace the dishwasher in the cafeteria and procure field maintenance equipment, which allows us to maintain our own fields.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion six is hereby moved to encumber $12,037 from the 2019-2020 surplus revenue for the purchase of PPE supplies per the recommendation of the Superintendent Director.
Motion made by Hannover, seconded by Situ.
Mr. Chairman, this motion is obvious for what we would need it for in light of preparing to open the school year. We, I'll speak a little bit later about how there are some expenses we will get reimbursed, but this just provides some additional resources. As it stands today, we have enough masks for a three-month supply to start the school year. That was the recommendation given to us. This amount of money will allow us to make sure that our facilities department can procure whatever needs to be open on day one.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Did you have some? So, this is just for three months.
The, Bob, the, so the purchase of the mask, we've already done. This would be, this would get us deeper into the school year, being able to tap those.
I could understand this is, we want to make sure we have enough for the whole year we need to.
Absolutely.
So, oh, we need to vote, take it now.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Anything else, Chairman?
No, I'm all set for now.
All right, Chairman. I guess we'll do our annual recognition.
Reorganization.
Reorganization. Bye, good luck.
Again, as I've noted in the past, these are the happiest seconds of my life right now. I'm here, so I'm not getting anything. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, in your package in front of you you have a folder with ballots for Chairman and Vice Chairman. Every year, after July meeting, the School Committee reorganizes, at which point we select a Chairman and a Vice Chairman. Historically, the way the balloting process works is that nominations for Chairman are taken from the floor, and then they're required to get a second. At that point, other additional nominations are requested from the floor. And depending upon how many recommendations we have, we'll do a vote of the recommendations. At that point, the top two individuals who receive the most votes on the first round of balloting will go on to a final ballot for the Chairman in the Vice Chairman position. So at this point, I would like to open the floor for nomination. We'll do the Chairman first and the Vice Chairman second. So at this point, I'd like to open up nominations for Chairman. Mr. Mahoney.
I'd nominate Robert Haywood, Hannover.
Okay. So a second.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, call the number twice. Do we have any nominations for Chairman? Third time, do we have any other nominations for Chairman? Seeing no nominations for Chairman, I will close the nomination process. With only one nomination in place, Mr. Haywood will be the only person that will be voted upon. And I guess I will do a hand vote at this point. Could you, actually, why don't you write down, if you could vote for Mr. Haywood on your ballot, could you make a notation, since we have a paper record of the ballots? Thank you. At this point, I will read the ballots. Mr. Miko votes for Mr. Haywood. Mr. Haywood votes for Mr. Haywood. Mr. Manning votes for Mr. Haywood. Mr. Mahoney votes for Mr. Haywood. Mr. Petrazelli votes for Mr. Haywood. Mr. Salvucci votes for Mr. Haywood. And Mr. Cooney votes for Mr. Haywood and Mr. Moller votes for Mr. Haywood. So congratulations, Mr. Haywood, you are the new Chairman for the 2020-2021 school year. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for Vice Chairman.
I nominate George Cooney.
Mr. Moller has nominated George Cooney. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Haywood. Do we have any nominations for Vice Chairman? Okay, asking twice. Do we have any nominations for Vice Chairman?
I'll nominate Juan Mahoney.
Nomination for Mr. Mahoney. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Miko. Do we have any other nominations for Vice Chairman? Seeing none, and having only two members of the board being nominated, we will do a one round of voting for the, for this position. So please mark on your ballot for, if you have a second piece of paper for Vice Chairman in your folder, could you mark either Mr. Cooney or Mr. Mahoney as your preference? Mr. Haywood votes for Mr. Mahoney. Mr. Manning votes for Mr. Mahoney. Mr. Mahoney votes for Mr. Mahoney. Mr. Petrazelli votes for Mr. Mahoney. Mr. Moller votes for Mr. Cooney. Mr. Salvucci votes for Mr. Mahoney. And Mr. Cooney votes for Mr. Mahoney. And Mr. Miko votes for Mr. Mahoney. By a vote of 701, Mr. Mahoney is voted in as the Vice Chairman for 2021-2021 school year.
That felt good.
Oh, yay. I'll be cheering with that. I'll be listening to you.
With pleasure, I bring this to the House. All right, where are we? Subcommittees, I may report you to many subcommittees, no? Superintendent, Superintendent Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Some brief comments for the committee. Start with summer projects updates. We're continuing to make good progress with the major on-campus projects, including the security doors project. You may have noticed some of the exterior doors looking a little different. These exterior doors, when fully operational, will have swipe card access. So the company's been working along quite nicely. And that's, that will be ready for the start of the school year. Our fields project is moving along. It looks kind of weird to pull into the campus and see behind the school as you look into the sky, the tops of some light poles. So the company put up the light poles this week, and our own staff are working this summer to handle underground trenching. That work will continue through the summer. And not knowing what the fall sports season looks like, regardless of that, we should have this also completed for the end of the summer. We are, we're also doing some internal projects as we continue to, A, make space for our own student body and also prepare for a rather unique school year. And so our staff, as always, are making some adjustments. We've taken a portion of the teacher's room to create another conference room. It's going to be very important that we reallocate space very judiciously so we can allow for whatever gatherings are necessary as a school year functions. So I'm very pleased with that progress. One of the other, one of the other features that we have to have as part of a reopening is a room dedicated for people who might have symptoms, COVID symptoms, separate from the nurse's office. So these are some of the other unique challenges we have, but we have a plan in place. And as we talked about in previous meetings, we will, we will have, we'll gather for a meeting in August, so I'll be able to give you a more detailed update on those same projects when we're together in August. The second I might have is a return-to-school plan update. And I'll just speak briefly about it right now to let you know that we have had some meetings with a working group of administrators and faculty. It is a, it is a, we're definitely, like many other school districts, threading a needle insofar as we don't yet have all of the state guidance on transportation and some other aspects. But we are expected to submit a plan by the end of the month that will address, will address how we want to open. There'll have to be details that are worked out throughout the summer. But the major questions that will have to be answered are, for us to open, what is our capacity to open? We have to look at space on buses. We have to look at the capacity of kids to drive themselves and families to drop off. I'm very happy to say that with a lot of hard work, we're, we've got a very high rate of return from families we sent a survey to. So we're going to have a very, very, to the family, understanding of who needs to take a bus, who thinks that they can drive themselves, and who will be dropping off. And while that may change and no one loses their transportation as a result, it gives us, it gives us the ability to plan. Our priority, and I will flesh this out in more detail when we talk again, but our priority is, if we're going to have kids in the building, I first of all do not think that we'll be able to have everybody back for both academic and shop instruction, in large part for transportation capacity, but even more so with classroom capacity, given even a reduced three-foot. If you were to walk through the school after this meeting and look in any classroom, you would see that we've modified every classroom to follow those three-foot guidelines. So our challenge in the next few weeks is going to be that we have to take a look at our master schedule and figure out ways where we can balance off some class sizes. And then we'll really have a good judge of capacity. I'll be perfectly honest, if the state guidance on bus transportation is somehow less than one kid per seat, what I've just said to you is going to have to be, maybe unfortunately, revisited even more. But everyone seems to agree that the top priority, if we have to bring children into this building, we must find space for all of them to be on campus for their technical studies. So the way we would be, the way that I'm looking at it is, this school could handle bringing every kid back for their shop week, two grades of kids per shop. We're going to scrub that down a little bit further. And we're working on a model which would have kids coming in for a portion of their academic week with greater emphasis on younger kids, especially the ninth graders we don't know. And then working out what is the capacity. So imagine, imagine if you were in ninth grade, ideally I'd like to have them in every day. But again, a little later this month, we'll know whether that's possible. And if it is not possible, we're going to strike a balance and probably have some sort of a staggered day, one day on. And I don't want to say one day off, because that's not what it is. It's one day on campus, and the next day might be remote. So I'm in school in front of my English, math, science, and social studies teachers on Monday. And then on Tuesday, I might be logging in on my Chromebook, following a similar schedule to continue my education. And then on Wednesday, I would return and so on and so forth. That's a conversation we just, we were just fleshing out with the working group today. I'll feel a lot better when I have all of the state, all of the state guidance. Kids who need extra support are a priority of ours as well. Remote learning is challenging. There is no substitute for face-to-face. And that's the message we got from our families. Parents want their kids to come back. They want them to come back safely. And they want them to come back in a structured environment. And so making sure that whatever our model is, we're going to continue to support the students. That's what we're going to do. I wish I could provide more detail, but it would be classic ready-fire-aim as we're awaiting a little more guidance from the state. But that's as close as I can update you at this point in terms of our return-to-school plan. I may come to you in August with a recommendation to make a modification to our school calendar. If the Commissioner, who has hinted at this, were to come out and say that he's going to reduce the 180-day school requirement. He has suggested that in order to help all folks transition back to school, that he may shorten the school year to 177 days or something like that, and allow schools to begin their school year with training days for staff, reorienting them to all of the various procedures that will be necessary. So my point is this, if that were to happen, then we would not have the first day of school for kids be September 1st. It might be the, it might be after Labor Day as a result. But we're going to wait to hear what the Commissioner has to say on that as well. Before I move on, I know that's enough of a summary for now perhaps, but if there's an immediate question I could answer for you, I'd be happy to do so.
Yeah, I have a question. Charlie, what do you think of, let's say, a math class, we'll just say that, right? And say you have 20 kids in it, but you only want to have 10. What would happen if you had every other day 10 kids in the classroom? And the teacher, as she teaches the kids that are in the classroom, also what she's saying is going remotely to the kids that can't be there. So the following day, the kids that listen to her on their iPad or wherever, So the following day, the kids that listen to her on their iPad or wherever are in school the next day. So she can check to make sure they did pay attention, and the kids are in the classroom, then that, they take their second, their day remote, and you just go back and forth.
Yes, we're, we're really taking an all-of-the-above look. I would say the, the, what we don't want to do is take every course curriculum and cut it in half. We don't want to take that class of 20 and teach half of them on one day and half of them on the other, because no one would ever get through a course curriculum. So we've got to look at how can technology support that? What we would look at first would be, in your scenario, could we find a classroom that could hold 20 children that were three feet apart, left to right and front to back? That would be our priority. If not, then my second question would be, what is the math class? If it's geometry nine, I would, I would say, let's look at the other class sizes. If I can get that down to 18, I can get them all in face-to-face on the same schedule. So the real question that the administrators are going to grapple with is, how many of those classes are north of, I mean, I'm going to say 18, I think, in our, excluding, say, the lecture hall or some other obvious big spaces, the average 800-square-foot classroom with that, with that distancing? We, we have, we have class, we have desks, we have numbers ranging from maybe 10 to, maybe 10 to maybe one class with 20. So we need to look very carefully at that. And yes, we, whatever we come up with, we must, it must be a routine. People can get into a routine.
Yep.
And that's the structure we're looking for.
Tom, are the teachers moving or are the students moving?
Based on, based on the comment I just made to Dan, the answer, the priority is going to be, where are the students, and the teachers will go to where the students are.
Yeah.
I do not believe that we can have a model, because of our size and the way that we're laid out, I don't think that we can say, all of us will be taught in the same wing of the building. But we are definitely going to take a very close look at how we can minimize traffic. How can we minimize the bell rings? And then there's, you know, the cattle call in the hallways for four minutes.
That's right.
There are ways that we can minimize that. We can look at how, is there a way that we could, could, if we're all in the same English class in room 101, could we all be in the same history class the next period? So maybe we don't move, but Mrs. Jones leaves and Mr. Smith comes in. Also, no harm, no harming kids at the dismissal bell going outside? Hey, you can all go out that door, we'll have a paraprofessional here to let you in, you can get some fresh air along the way. So we are not leaving any, any stone unturned, especially for those, those pinch points on hallways.
I was thinking more of the cleaning of the classroom between groups of students going in and out.
And that's part, that will be part of our reentry plan, Bob, because we're going to have to document, and we're going to follow DPH guidance, but we have to make sure we're using very clear language. So to say cleaning versus sanitizing versus disinfecting, right? We have to make sure that we're very clear. And then follow the latest signs on how frequently do we have to clean surfaces? And that, again, we have to pressure test all of these ideas. Can we keep it safe? Can we keep it clean? Can we keep it orderly? Are the kids learning? And continue to ask those questions until the answers to all of those questions are yes. And that's our, then we'll know we have a plan.
Thank you.
I have, I have one too. I follow things on the morning news every day. What's the status of the state guidelines versus, versus let every district or every community set their own standards?
That, that is a question that districts are asking. We were given the, we are expecting that when all of the guidance is released, that there will be, there will be some directives embedded in there. But I think it's going to be a mix of directives and, and, you know, local, local decisions. They cannot set out a directive which says, turn on the air conditioners when you have 150-year-old school building somewhere with, you know, with no air conditioners. But they can set an expectation that we're going to, we're going to document how we're ensuring proper ventilation. I, to be honest with you, Bob, I think it's going, I think it's going to be a mix. But I would be very reluctant to ignore, even if they package it in words like this is guidance, I would really need to know my stuff to suggest that we would go against guidance. But very little that I've seen right now is, you know, is an outright directive. Because at times, it makes it a little easier for us at the local level to say, look, this is, this is the way it is. So six feet becomes three feet, or six feet with social distancing and masks. Ideally, six feet. If we had to, if six feet were the rule, these classrooms would, we would not be able to bring back. I, I don't want to say we bring back nobody, but if we had a six-foot rule in our 750-square-foot classrooms.
How would that happen?
We, I, I don't know, I don't know how, we would have to go, we would have to talk about split sessions and, you know, buses running every minute. It wouldn't seem practical. So I, I'm hoping that even within the next 24 hours, we're going to get a document that, that is basically the template. We don't even have the, we don't have the template yet to fill out to submit the plan. So I think with that will come some other guidance.
When do you have to have your three categories in?
July 31st.
Oh, that's another week.
Yeah, exactly.
Tom, let me, on the vocational side, as I mentioned to you before, it's the possibility, I know we have our seniors go out on co-op right away. Would that be something that Desi would allow the juniors, that instead of waiting till February 1, be able to get some of the juniors that are eligible with their grade point average or whatever out early?
I, I know there is a, so the, the short answer is, it is governed by regulation, but the field, the community, our vocational communities are asking those questions. And as, so as of today, there hasn't been any relaxing of the, you can't go out before the middle of your junior year. But it is being looked into, that if a student, as long as you have at least a full year in a vocational program, good grades, check all of those other boxes, it is possible. So that is a conversation that's happening in all parts of the Commonwealth with our schools, saying that allow a kid to come back, do a skills assessment, double-check safety. And then it, that would be on a case-by-case basis, but I think there's a lot of interest in that. And so I'm hoping we'll be able to update on that, that that would be an, that would be an opportunity that currently doesn't exist, but it's being discussed.
Yeah, well, that would lighten up the load in some of the shops.
Yes.
Also.
Yes.
That, you know, if you're able to get out an extra 15, 20 students.
It would.
You know, whatever that may, whatever that number is, I'm sure it's a lot higher than that, but because our numbers have been increasing in that category.
And, and the good news is that our numbers have also been increasing with our junior class. So we know that we had, we had a good number of what we would now be rising seniors. And so if we had, if we had a student who just started their co-op when we shut down in March, it's very likely they stayed there working on their own. It's very likely that they could have been working over the summer. So it might be very little, a very narrow window of time for those, for those seniors as well. Our, what we will be doing, once we get some additional guidance, is we will be looking in the month of August to take necessary steps for those kids. Actually, you know, we, we're going to have to do another safety visit, we're going to have to have some documentation with families so that they're aware that your child is going out to a co-op site. We're going to make, we're going to ask the employer to continue to follow OSHA regulations and, and have protective equipment, et cetera. It will be much easier on everybody if we can attack that in August in preparation for the school year. That will cut down on the window of time before those kids who are already out on co-op could go back as seniors.
Well, that's, it's our responsibility to have those students and the trainers get the basics before they go out anyway.
Yes.
We can't send them out on day one of a junior year. You know, we have trouble getting them educated for the junior year, because some of them can't make it from the halfway, and you have to keep them until...
We are, we are bracing ourselves for a skills gap across the board, and that's why we, yeah, we will definitely have to look at that very carefully. Dan?
Yeah, Tom. For all, everything that we, we're going into, different effects financially on us. The process, what I understand is that we let each town know what it's costing, our school for reimbursement from Plymouth County?
I'll try, I'll try to give you a one-minute answer on that.
Right.
You are, you are correct.
Yeah.
The, the county applied directly to the federal government for CARES Act funding. You may have read in the, in the press in the last month that, it might have been part of a governor's news conference, $225 per student. That, that statement does not apply to school districts in Plymouth County or the city of Boston. Both entities applied on their own to the federal government to get money. So you are correct, Dan, the, the way that the reimbursement process works would be, never mind the $225, we wouldn't have access to that, but we, the county got a lot of money.
$91 million.
And so we can, and, and there's no, there's no per-kid limit. So what we would be doing, and we've done this once, and, and we will do this probably twice more between, let's say now, and maybe three times between now and December, which is, we would incur costs. Bob Morehead puts in a requisition, someone else, you know, our school nurse puts in a requisition. We code it in our system as a COVID expense. We then take the amount that we're spending, and we will periodically then apportion that at a head, a student headcount and send it out to our towns. The clarification that I'll be making to our towns when we do this a second time is that I will also be sending similar correspondence to our non-resident Plymouth County communities. Because this particular matter has nothing to do with whether you're in this district or not. So the, so hypothetically, if there are 100 kids in the building and 10 of the kids are from Pembroke, and I spent $1,000, and I would take 10% of $1,000, and I would show the paid invoices to the town. What I'm hoping for, and these were my initial conversations with the county, is if there's a way to cut down on the, if, if there's a way to streamline or expedite the process, that would be helpful. So for instance, if every, if the town is supportive of our expense, then the funds from that should come directly to us. But if they don't, it will just be one extra step that the funds would go to the town and then come back to us. So, so with, with the support of the business office, we will know what we're sending out to our towns for reimbursement, and we'll just, and we'll just track that. So for right now, I, I wouldn't want to be so bold as to say, we will get reimbursed for 100% of our expenses. But that $91 million that you mentioned, that is, that is for COVID-eligible expenses. So we will incur the expense, and then we can seek relief from the county. On a side note, we also, separate from that, we also received money from, from the state. I may have mentioned this last month. Every school district, regardless of county, was given an allotment of money based on their Title I funding. So we, we, we submitted a grant application, and so we have, in, in our control directly, $59,000, which is about 80% of what we get for Title I funds. So if you were to ask me, what do you have available to help support COVID-related expenses? I would answer, I would answer by saying, we have $59,000 from the state at hand. And it's not just masks, PPE, it's any expenses. So Chromebooks for kids who don't have one at home will be our single biggest expense that will, that's, we're going to need some support on that, that's eligible. I could also go to the county as well. And then the department has put out a, what they're calling a technology matching grant, which is due next Tuesday. They don't promise an amount of money. What they say is, tell us what you anticipate your technology needs are. And then we will tell you what we can match. So for instance, if we, in surveying our parents, I can tell you that 112 rising ninth graders are probably going to need a Chromebook. And 120 existing students, grades 10 through 12, are going to need a Chromebook. So that's 230 Chromebooks at $400 apiece. You need some carts to store them in. So that could be $140,000, don't hold me to that, but, you know, in that, in that range. So that's the kind of significant expense. So I, as far as I'm concerned, we're going to, we're going to reach for every possible opportunity. And so we may, at the end of it all, be able to get all of what I've just described covered. But if I had to make a list of what we need, other, outside of the PPE and the sanit, and the sanitizer, if I was focused on technology, that would be the other biggest expense. So we have, we have access to resources, but there's a difference between the money is here and we have to go and spend it first and then seek reimbursement.
Get reimbursed.
Yeah, and we'll be okay to spend it upfront and then get reimbursed. My sense is that the county is turning things around right now quickly. But I think we'll just have the added step of having to stay in good communication with our communities about those funds returning to us. So, yes, so not much to say on this topic, sorry, I ran out of things to talk about. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next, the next item, to let you know, we'll be purchasing a textbook for a, a marketing course that we're running. And the last item I have on my report is to turn it over to Mark and Sandy to, Sandy, to talk about updates on the student handbook. We're not asking, we're not asking for any action on this tonight, we'll bring this back to you in August, but this would be an opportunity to just hear what, what the team has been working on.
Good evening, committee. I'd like to start with a couple of compliments. First, compliments to the committee for meeting in this forum, which is the forum really that our students will be expected to meet in, and wearing masks, and learning how to speak, and deal with some uncomfortable consequences of wearing a mask. And we're doing what we're going to ask our kids to do in September, so appreciate that. Also wanted to throw a quick compliment to Tom and Mark, who are their excellent leadership and a really great show at graduation. We haven't been able to spend, so thank you for that, and for all of the, you have sure up to that event. Only positive feedback from that, I haven't heard a word other than just a wonderful event. So thank you to Tom and Mark for, for helping out for us. And finally, just a thank you to Tom, really, for his leadership as he structured the work groups for our progress towards, it's going to be really planning for a multi-marathon the next school year. We know that we're running a really long race, but we haven't seen the course map yet. And he's really doing a good job of ensuring that our faculty's engaged appropriately at each level. So I think just really a compliment to him for that, too. Thank you. I am satisfied to work for the school district, and specifically to be able to continue to move forward, make progress on sort of the boring old normal stuff. And rewriting the student handbook is, is not glamorous, and, but it's work that is, I'm happy to do. And the changes that we made are for a regular school year and regular conditions, and should stand the test of time in that regard. The changes that we made were, were the most substance was in the area of extracurricular activities, that athletic eligibility. Just making sure that what we have in our document is flexible enough to meet the needs of our students on an annual basis. Making sure that teachers and students all know when their eligibility dates will happen and communicate effectively with the support of our athletic director. Also, in attendance, we updated some of our conditions for attendance so that things were streamlined so that our, our attendance committee could work in a more organized fashion. It was a very successful committee last year, and we'll continue to keep that going next year. Cell phones, we just updated it to reflect the, the actual practices as opposed to what we used to do. We updated our quote of conduct, clarifying some definitions and providing hyperlinks to some of the laws. Dress code, just articulated what's really happening where kids can't, can't wear hats. We actually loosened those conditions a little bit during the regular school year, where they could wear hats in the school building, in the gym, and in the caf while they're eating breakfast or playing hoops. They really responded positively to that, a little bit of flexibility, and we wanted to memorialize that in the student handbook. And then finally, student evaluation, we just tidied that up a little bit. We tried to make progress through our student handbook years ago in talking about evaluation language as a whole school. And we've really done that work, and so now we're able to take it out of the student handbook, and it, all that information is placed on the individual teacher expectation sheet. And then updated our language around credit recovery to reflect current practices, what we're doing now with online learning and those resources. And finally, the, the greatest changes to the handbook will be how you find it. It will no longer be one doc, one, one running document, it'll be a series of hyperlinks through the table of contents. So if you're interested in, in what happened in terms of a disciplinary incident, you can click right to disciplinary protocols in our building. If you want to know the dress code issues, click on dress code in there, so a little bit more, a friendlier tool for administrators, students, parents, and teachers. So you will see that for our Google in August with a, a couple more additions, but this is really the heart of it, and we'll see much more. Any questions?
Thank you, Sandy. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's the end of my report.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the superintendent evaluation. I would ask for a motion to approve Tom's evaluation, his rating as exemplary in all standards. Whitman, motion made by Whitman, second by Sintuas. Any discussion on the matter? All in favor? In unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Second item is the... Second item is the school improvement plan. I would ask for a motion to approve the school improvement plan. Hanson, I had to remember where you were going. Second by Woodman. Second by Woodman. Any discussion on that? None? All in favor? In unanimous. Motion carries. Uh-oh, now we got warrants.
Warrants 25, 25A, 26, 26A, 27, and 27B, for a total of $1,227,301.40.
Conloomed. Second by Woodman. Any discussion on it? Sandy, none? All in favor? Any requests for action? Nope. Okay, I'll be going into executive.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that we end the meeting into executive session and not to reconvene.
Okay. Second by Hanson. So individual vote. Hanson?
Yep.
Go all in.
Hi.
Yes.
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 In unanimous. We are in executive session.